Came from the House. It was a House bill that was approved today and it passed the Senate. Now, there were some changes, so it'll go into conference committee and as some of you may know, that's the wild, wild west, but we'll see if that's...I assume it will stay...it was unanimous, so I assume that will stay in its same form, be signed into law by the governor.
But the funding was what, twice what was originally proposed?
The funding has increased, yes.
So that's good news.
I believe so. And there's a lot of other funding coming from the federal government that will be proffered by the state agencies as they get it, including schools.
Mm-hmm.
You know, over a billion dollars across the United States, over a billion dollars here in Indiana, I'm sorry, that'll go to public schools. Any other questions? Thank you, Senator.
I'll cut down the number of texts to five.
Just make them longer. You're fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I think if Senator Baldwin's getting ten texts, I know how many I get. Someone should let DMO Harris Bank know they may not be getting a full day's work out of Greg O'Connor. Just teasing. Greg keeps us on the toes.
That's when they get their pound of flesh.
That is exact...I'm sure they do. Thank you. And I would just say how much I appreciate Senator Scott Baldwin and his willingness to come talk with us. It's been unlike we've seen before. So, thank you, Senator, for spending a few minutes. We'll try to make it brief for you tonight. And I shouldn't have let him go ahead of me because he stole a lot of my thunder in the first part of that, but I just wanted to rise quickly in case you didn't get a chance to watch the governor's remarks at 5:30. I thought they were very encouraging and very, very helpful, but I also want to somewhat strike a word of caution going forward here. Senator Baldwin outlined it well. Starting March 31st, anyone 16 up are eligible to receive the vaccine, which is exciting. Then April 6th, a lot of those masks or a lot of the COVID restrictions go somewhat away and then focus more on local control for these decisions. And I wanted to reiterate what that means. First of all, there'll be a lot of examination over the next couple of days as to what that definition of local control is. And we've had that conversation a lot over the past year. And we'll be...so we'll be coming to you with some more of those changes, but he did reiterate that the State Department of Health will be giving us weekly numbers as they've done with the color coding system, which I think is incredibly helpful to guide the local Hamlin County health decisions. And that mask mandate will become a mask advisory. So, we'll again have some more clarity for all of you in the coming days here in the city of Noblesville as to what that means. But I just want to reiterate that, you know, I've been incredibly proud of the way that the city of Noblesville has handled the COVID-19 pandemic. I think residents have been diligent and thoughtful as they've adjusted to changes, wore masks, took precautionary measures. Megan Wiles will tell you every single day. She's a great true champion for a lot of those measures. And I think that we owe it to our first responders, our healthcare workers, our police and firefighters, our nurses, paramedics, et cetera, to continue to be diligent. Just because some of these regulations, if you will, or guidelines might be loosened, I still think it's imperative that we all continue to be safe, to monitor our activities, to maintain social distancing, and just be smart going forward. The last thing we want to do is find ourselves in a situation where we were a little over a year ago. So, again, be looking out for more guidelines from the city of Noblesville and how we will handle it here, especially as it relates to our city staff and our city buildings going forward. But we will continue to take our guidelines from the county health department here in Hamilton County as they are the jurisdictional authority over healthcare decisions in Hamilton County. So, just wanted to start with that. Again, that's about an hour old, so we will quickly continue to put together our plans. Happy to be engaged with all of you as we do that and council leadership to brief and take advisement from you all as well. So, any questions for me? I'd be happy to answer them. If not, thanks for your time this evening.
On behalf of the council, congratulations on all of the residents.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. She's awfully cute and mom is awfully cute as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, I think this is real preliminary, but do you anticipate, like, each business having its own plan or is it...
That was actually...that was part of the announcement today. The governor was pretty emphatic about each business having a plan. I think it's important for each and every business to have their individual plan. That's where I think...I think that's probably what he meant a lot by local control, is coming down to each individual businesses to establish...
Not local as in city.
Yes. And again, I think we're still working through the murkiness of that definition, but he very much encouraged every business to have their plan going forward.
Thank you.
I think that's the start of several questions, I think, that we'll all have in the next week or so.
Bob back there might be...
Bob will be on the forefront of the answers to that as well. Right, Bob?
Good luck, Bob.
Our partners at the Noblesville Chamber of Commerce will be here to assist. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to council committee reports. Downtown District.
Yes, the Downtown District Committee met on March 15th. In attendance was Darren Peterson, Aaron Smith, and myself. Mr. Air was not able to join us, but we also had City Clerk Evelyn Lee's, Deputy Mayor Matt Light, Communications Director Emily Gayler, Community Engagement Manager Kayla Arnold, Engineering Project Manager Andrew Rodewald, and then we were also joined by Main Street President, Board President Liz Tate, and Vice President Jay Monday. Downtown Streetscape Plan, we have joined in partnership with Noblesville Main Street to be in communication with the downtown businesses. And so, a lot of the discussion was talking about a committee of those business owners to work together with the city to provide accurate information to those business owners and talk about addressing the needs and concerns of those businesses. So, a series of meetings will be held over the coming months to make sure that we are working with them and making sure...do everything possible to help those businesses as we go through this process. That Main Street wants to be a part of that process and that they are positioned to have more personal contact with the business owners and merchants. So, we're excited about that relationship. It's important that while the project has been delayed to starting in 2022, that the city continue to receive feedback from...on the project now so that we can incorporate that into any designs that are being finalized through the remainder of this year. Of course, we always talk about downtown streetlights at this meeting, and that's going to continue to move forward. It had been anticipated that the replacement of lights along Connor Street Bridge and along the Judicial Center and the Riverwalk in partnership with the county was going to be a part of the Downtown Streetscape Plan, but because that has been delayed, we're going to move forward with going ahead and getting those replaced this year.
Will those be black?
Yes, Mr. O'Connor, they will be black.
I just wanted to make sure.
To match all the other black streetlights in the downtown district. We will continue to have meetings and design review for the Downtown Streetscape Plan by mid-May. We'll have a mid-May meeting. Mr. Light talked about creating a FAQ page that we'll have online so that as businesses or the public has questions about it, they can go there. And I'm happy to share that the annual inaugural Peony Festival is going to be taking place at Seminary Park on May 22nd. And our very own Kelly McVeigh is leading that charge to create the Indiana Peony Festival, which is the state flower for Indiana. So, with that, that's the report.
Any questions? Finance Committee.
Much better. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you. Thank you, yes.
He just wanted to be on camera.
Finance Committee met Thursday. Myself and Megan Wiles were in attendance. And Andrew Murray talked about a couple redevelopment areas that he's going to talk to you about tonight, so I'm not going to go into it. It's a TIF allocation area for patch development and also East River Partners. That was all we discussed. It was a pretty quick meeting and we could not approve the claims because we did not have a court. That's all I got.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Davis? If not, can I have a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second to approve the claims. There's a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Right hand. Nine oh. On to miscellaneous business. Number one, council to consider Resolution RC 1321 a resolution approving a declaratory resolution and economic development plan of the Redevelopment Commission establishing the Noblesville-Washington Business Park Economic Development Area, which such resolution removes certain property from the State Road 37 and 146th Street Economic Development Area and the order of the Plan Commission related thereto Washington Business Park. Andrew Murray.
Thank you, President Peterson, members of council, Andrew Murray, Economic Development Director for the record. Before this evening is a resolution that is one of multiple steps in creating the TIF allocation area. This is specific to the Washington Business Park project and the development agreement that this council previously approved with patch development. Recall the purpose for setting up this TIF allocation area is to collect the property taxes or tax increment that is generated as a result of investment in the Washington Business Park. And that is...a portion of that increment is then pledged as a source of repayment to the project bonds that will be issued again pursuant to the approved development agreement. Procedurally speaking, again, this process starts with a redevelopment commission. And then the second step is the Plan Commission approves their order. So, both of those governing bodies have acted, and so the council's role this evening is to ratify those adoptions. And then assuming that goes according to plan, we'll go back to the Redevelopment Commission to confirm everything and hold the required public hearing. Chairman Davis mentioned we did vet this with the Finance Committee, and this does come to you with a favorable recommendation. From a timing perspective, next action items pursuant to with this project, this council can expect a bond ordinance at your April meeting, which is next month. We are tracking to close the bond financing and then construction to start first of May for this project in partnership. With that, I'll stop there. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move that we approve Resolution RC-13-21 as submitted.
Second?
Motion to approve Resolution RC 1321 in a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. No? Abstention? On to number two, council to consider Resolution RC 1421 a resolution approving one a declaratory resolution and economic development plan of the Redevelopment Commission establishing the East Bank Allocation Area, which such resolution removes certain property from the Noblesville Redevelopment Area Allocation Area and, two, the order of the Plan Commission related thereto East Bank. Andrew Murray.
Thank you, President Peterson. This item, Resolution 14-21, procedurally, everything is the same as your last item. We're setting up another TIF allocation area. This is specific to the East Bank project, which is our project partnership with J.C. Hart and Republic Development to redevelop the southeast, southwest corner of Sixth Street and Connor along the river. So, again, this is the pledge. We're going to do this to capture the increment and pledge towards a project bond to be issued. All of this is pursuant to the previously approved council...by the council's development agreement. So, I'll stop there and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Wiles?
I would move that we approve Resolution RC-14-21 as presented.
The motion to approve Resolution RC 1421 in a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine oh. That is...concludes our business. Are there any council comments?
President?
Mr. Wiles?
There was an announcement made by the county and I believe by the city of Fishers about the closure of 146th Street between April 5th and April 12th. And for those people who will still be in the city of Noblesville during that time period, 146th Street will be closed and you cannot cross over State Road 37. So, I would encourage you to seek alternate routes. Again, that's scheduled to close from...and it's from Harriman Boulevard over to Jaggers. And it's scheduled to go from April 5th to April 12th, all weather dependent. So...
And 37 is going to remain open.
That's my understanding, yes.
Is that true? Will it stay open?
That's my understanding. 37 will stay open. Just shifting the lanes on 146th Street.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Just a question for the mayor. How did the...how did the NCAA activities go? The fan viewing?
Yeah, great question. Thanks for asking. Thanks, council, for your support with that. I obviously was not there on Saturday, but I was monitoring from afar while so...yes. So, they...there was a little over a thousand individuals attended the Hoops on the Hill event on Saturday, which was awesome. The weather was chamber commerce.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. And we had quite a bit of media attention, local media, on it, which was really, really exciting. So, I appreciate Director Connect and his team with the Hamilton County Health Department as well, making sure that we maintained, although after I saw some pictures of some events downtown Indianapolis, I'd say we were just fine in comparison. So, appreciate all those folks who took time to come out. The drive-through Fan Jam in early March saw about 150 cars come through as well. So, it's been an exciting time. I will also remind you that you can go scan the QR code in downtown Noblesville on the square. We're giving away $25 gift cards to local businesses here. here in Noblesville, and there's still many, many more of them available. So all you have to do is go scan that QR code, enter your information, and you'll be entered to win a $25 gift card. So take time to do that this March.
Mr. Mayor, is it, I haven't seen the code, but I haven't been looking for it because I wasn't here last week. Is it just kind of everywhere?
It is right, the main one that I see every single day is right in front of the Mateo's out near that alley where you see the street sign with the street map on it on the sidewalk. On one side is a street map. On the other side is the QR code. So pretty easy to find if you're looking for it, walking along that Ninth Street sidewalk there. I believe there's one in Federal Hill Commons as well, so.
Basketball were a big hit.
Yes, basketballs were a big hit.
Any of those with the council?
I bet we could find you some.
Kidding us, Lee.
Yes. Thank you again. Thanks for the question, Mr. O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments?